Much congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as is our own.
The ready citizen statements or petitions? I'd like to just make a statement upfront to thank the Troop One Mendon Boy Scouts kind of in advance. Scout Master Joe Hood just stopped here before the meeting and Troop One Mendon is going to provide the community service project next Thursday and move as much of these baggage boxes and things over into the town hall annex next Thursday. That's what the fire department has acknowledged they would appreciate that. Storage rack, it's also a treadmill. We just have to figure out how to disassemble it and move it. But we're going to get that cleared off, so I just want to thank them for that. We have some correspondence. You want to go over this? David, do you want me to read this?
If you could.
Sure. Received a letter, it's dated November 21st, addressed to the Select Board from the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. And it says, "I'm very pleased to inform you that Carl Hamel, associated with the Mendon Conservation Commission, successfully completed eight units of the Massachusetts Association Conservation Commission's Fundamentals for Massachusetts Conservation Commissioners Training Program and has received a certificate of achievement for that accomplishment." So our Conservation Commission Chair now has received some proper training. And it said, "The fundamental program provides conservation commissioners and others with the basic knowledge and practical tools essential to carry out the many responsibilities of administrating the Wetlands Protection Act and Open Space Plan. Such training promotes sound, consistent, fact-based decision-making and builds respect for Conservation Commission decisions. Each person who completes the course validates the wisdom of locally-based protection of wetlands and open space for current and future generations. We congratulate Carl for undertaking this training, as well as you and the Mendon Conservation Commission for recognizing the value of training and commission work and supporting this important training for your commission. It closes a media release announcing Carl's achievement for forwarding to your local newspaper. We believe participation in continuing education on wetland and open space issues is an essential aspect of the work of Conservation Commission members and staff. We hope you'll encourage commissioners to participate and ensure that the commission budget includes adequate funding for the modest training fee necessary for participation." And it's sincerely signed by Dorothy McGlyncie, the Executive Director of the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. And I want to congratulate Carl for taking the time to do that and getting trained up.
Congratulations, yeah, it's a lot of work.
So, we have, let's move to number 18. We have one topic that was not, didn't make it on the agenda by Monday. It was put on either late Monday or early Tuesday. It's a letter for community housing grant proposal, so Jack Hunter, if you can come on up there, talk to us about this.
Anne Mazars is online as well regarding this, maybe Dylan, a few of us. We, somehow through my correspondence, I got notified about Mass Housing's Community Housing Grant. It's a revolving grant that's offered to towns who are looking for some expertise on trying to move along affordable housing efforts. And I know Anne and I in the past had talked about a possibility of trying to do something with that house on the paddock property that you bought a year or so ago, I think, and maybe use some additional land to see if there's any possibility of putting in an affordable housing complex of some sort, probably not very big there. So, we have Dylan on the phone, on the phone, on the call, Anne Mazars, and I should introduce Joseph Chowberry, who's the Regional Housing Planner, who's fairly new. And between the four of us, we've been preparing this grant. There's no deadline. We've kind of set ourselves up to have a deadline of this week or maybe next Monday. I think we're very close to submitting. We're going to ask for $50,000. There is a match that Anne may want to talk about. I've received these grants in the past, and I recollect that it's not like they give us 50 grand and we go try to find somebody. They give you an expert in affordable housing. I guess in their mind, it's worth $50,000. And at least the one time I had it in Hudson, the consultant they gave us was excellent, just excellent. And it became a real project. As a matter of fact, I went to the groundbreaking over the summer. So, we'd like to apply. We need your permission and authorize the Chair to sign the letter. And I know Anne's going to say something.
No, I was just saying that there was a 10% match, was it?
Yeah.
So, at our next community preservation meeting, we're going to ask for that match. So hopefully that will pass.
Now, Anne, if you, if your committee approves it, we would still have to go to the annual town meeting to spend.
No.
No?
No, this would be administrative funds, because you can spend administrative funds on trying to figure out what future CPA projects would be. So this would be like an analysis, helping us figure out if we can put affordable housing there.
So is there a cap? Is it the separate admin fund that's in there, or is there a cap, how much you can spend?
There's an administrative fund, which at each annual town meeting, we vote 5% of the CPA funds to go into that account.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the town meeting, the town already voted that, you can decide how to make the individual spends out of that money that the townspeople already approved?
Yes. It can be for like engineering and consultation and things like that, when you're trying to figure out if you could do a CPA project.
Yeah, we've used that money to hire a couple engineers on 52 Providence.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I have a, I have a letter that, proposed letter that was written.
I don't have questions, but I, you know, endorse, I endorse this. I mean, we talked a lot with the housing production plan about how Mendon needs more diverse housing, and so this is another step in that direction.
Yeah, it was part of the purpose why we actually bought the paddock property. It's always great to get some expert advice about how to proceed with what we want to accomplish.
And it does seem like a plus that the grant comes with the expertise, so because it takes out that additional step of having to find the right expert.
Right, because otherwise you got to procure it. You got to go out, it's a pain in the butt, but you have to do it.
Right, so it sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, I hope so.
So, here is the proposed letter that's addressed to Monica Pacino, Municipal Technical Assistance Manager at Mass Housing in Boston. It says, "As voted at our December 6, 2023 Select Board Meeting, the Mendon Select Board fully supports Mendon's submission of this request for technical assistance through Mass Housing's Planning for Housing Production Program Grant. This will help Mendon move forward to possibly create affordable housing at the site at 75 Providence Street in Mendon. The town purchased the property with the intention of preserving open space and providing affordable housing. This technical assistance grant will assist Mendon by providing professional services which will guide the town towards the best use of this property in regard to affordable housing." So if nobody has any questions, I would, under number 18, I would ask for a motion.
Before the motion, I just, I don't think it's limited, but we're not limited to 75. We're just saying that's where we're starting, or that's one of the options for the housing person to be looking at, like.
The property, you mean?
Yeah, the property.
Oh, we're site-specific on this.
Okay.
Yeah, so this grant, this grant is focused on this, but obviously the expertise, like, I think maybe.
Well, that's what I was getting at, like, can the expertise be used across the system, or is it focused?
Well, I think we're all going to learn something.
Okay.
You know, the issue, and many communities have this issue, it's not Mendon's alone, is you don't have infrastructure, you don't have water, you don't have sewer.
Right.
And that makes affordable housing extremely difficult, because affordable housing is based on mass, unfortunately, and you need more land, and you need everything else that comes along with it. So I think we're all going to learn something.
So that everything else that comes along with it is the benefit?
Yes, yeah, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. But do you want to talk about, I don't know if we have it elsewhere, but we kind of dovetails with.
52?
Well, with our discussion about, it's 52, but also discussion about water and sewer that we had, the update that we had too.
You want me to just picky? I know that, well, if, Mike, if you, I can give them an update on 52 Providence.
Okay.
52 Providence, as you know, we went out to bid, unfortunately, we didn't get one. We debriefed with everyone, and it was an issue of too much uncertainty on cost, the water and sewer, and access. So through the graces of the CPA Admin Fund, we hired an environmental engineer from Environmental Tech to look at the directional drilling. I don't have a map or anything, but to go from the well, which is pre-approved by DEP, and get to the upland site where the housing will be, and we're going to go underneath the wetlands. Pretty cool. I've done it twice. And he's identified the entry point and the exit point outside of the resource area. Now, we promised Conservation we'd go there anyway. It's a new thing for a lot of conservation commissions, so that's already been done. It's, we have his report and we're ready to go. We also hired Garryer and Halden, I always screw that up, and what they're doing is designing an access to go over the stream to get from Providence Street to the upland. And their job is not only design it, but permit it through Conservation Commission, and obviously we'll help them. They're in the process, that's a bigger job, with the whole idea that hopefully by January, we'll have both of those engineering documents ready to go, permitted, and we'll put those in the RFP and go back out to bid. That's the plan.
Lower the barriers.
Lowering the barriers. It's all, it's all about cost for these people, you know, they're limited, very, very limited in affordable housing. So that's that, Mike.
Right. Any other questions? Comments? I guess I'd be looking for a motion. Number 18.
I move to authorize the Select Board Chair to sign a letter for support for the community housing grant proposal.
Motion been made and seconded. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want me to stay for the water study here, or we're going now?
Let's do a couple of appointments, if you don't mind.
Yeah, because I know our consultant is.
He may not be.
And they have a presentation to give you.
Yeah, great.
That you saw.
Right, okay. Let's go to number five, Historical Commission, five and six Historical Commission. We have Christina Campbell and Deborah Bro. If you ladies want to come up. I know that you expressed your interest, but if you could just introduce yourselves to the, to the board and tell us, maybe if you could stop first, our first, Ms. Bro.
Debbie Bro. I've lived in Mendon for 20 years. I've, my son went to preschool with Christina. I've served on MUF, I've served on numerous PTOs, and I was made aware that there were some vacancies in the Historical Commission and an opportunity maybe to join. And I've read over the minutes from the last year, and I thought it sounded pretty awesome and worthwhile, and so I sent a letter to Laura, and here we are.
Great. And Ms. Campbell, how about you?
So I'm Christina. I have also lived in Mendon my entire life. I'm currently in law school, in my final year, and with that coming to a close very soon, I was hoping to try to get involved with the community and like to the Historical Commission as well.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for both agreeing to step up. And don't stop there, there's plenty of other places. You're in it now, right. So I guess, let's, let's.
How many vacancies are on these?
Three.
Three, okay.
Nice job.
I actually had a question, how, to help optimize outreach, how did you hear about the vacancies? I know we've been trying to publicize the vacancies on the town website as well as Facebook, but what's working and what's not?
I actually heard about it from Ellen Agro.
Okay, cool.
She's our biggest place.
I saw it on Facebook.
Okay, awesome.
Great.
Jim in Maroli, it's Kathy Schofield.
Hi, Kath.
Hi, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, good. We were able to meet with Christina. We didn't get a chance to meet with Deborah, but I've heard the wonderful things about her. The Commission is very excited to have some new appointees, and we would highly recommend their appointment.
Great, well, thank you very much. Apologize for not recognizing you first, I didn't realize you were on there. So, all right, well, let's, let's start with number five, if we could have a motion.
I move to appoint Christina Campbell to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, number six, under Deborah Bro.
I move to appoint Deborah Bro to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
For the second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's a little like rock, paper, scissors.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for volunteering, we really appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Let's go to number seven, let's talk about the asphalt hot box. If the Highway Sevilla wants to come up, and I think you sent this presentation.
I did, did you guys get a chance to look at it?
Can you pull it up? Is that?
It's this way, it's working on it.
Okay. Why don't you start, start talking, and you'll.
As we know, potholes is the biggest thing the highway department does. Our current hot box, not really unsafe, but it's not effective right now. It doesn't hold heat anymore, it keeps breaking down on us, we have to keep getting it fast. As far as safety goes with this, as you see in the picture, if you looked at the presentation, it's in the back of one of our trucks. To work on it, to work in it, we have to climb up into the truck, and we actually had an employee before I started who fell off the truck working on that, was out of work for eight months. It's just not a safe setup. I know these slide-in units are a little cheaper, but the trailer units that I'm recommending are going to be more effective, they're going to be safer for the workers, and it's not going to tie up a truck. That hot box stays in that truck, doesn't come out, it's held in by turnbuckles, and we actually had it almost fall off into the road last year on Nettio Road, because it's just, it's old, everything's getting worn out and things like that. Luckily, one turnbuckle held on, there were people behind it, it's just not a safe setup all around. But it is utilized to repair the potholes. I put in that statistic, from 2022, we did 157 tons of material through our current hot box. Kind of touched on some of the issues already. We're requiring the guys to climb in and out of the truck to work on it, and the biggest downfall we have is, so we're looking at 45 minutes to an hour turnaround trip to go to the asphalt plant and come back to continue working. It's only a one-ton unit, we're looking at a two-ton unit, so it should cut out, we only do one trip a day instead of having to do two, which gives us more time to get potholes.
Yeah, I recall actually when we approved the last one. So it's about, it says about, it's about 11 years old?
It's a lie of 2012 when we got it. It leaks oil, you know, it's the product on a regular basis, there's a lot of flashover that happens, like we've seen the flames come out from underneath the doors. Just not a safe unit, as you can see in some of the pictures, the floors and the walls have started to warp, and there's a hole in one of the doors. The doors don't seal like they should anymore, which is keeping the product hot like it should.
What would you do with the old one?
Sort block.
Just take it out of service?
Take it out of service, free up that truck.
And the new one's on a trailer?
Yeah, the new one's on a trailer.
If it's a sliding, I mean, you need to replace it, right? That's not, not a question, I'm just kind of curious, but how much cheaper is a slide-in? If it's a slide-in, it sounds like it's designed to be removed and put in, it's not an easy process. But why wasn't it, so it wasn't easy, so we just left it in the truck?
It stays in the truck year-round.
But that was it, but is it designed to do that, or did we just decide to do that?
We just decided to do that. It's not good for the truck to keep that weight on the suspension.
When it was, when it was, as I recall, I was on the FinCon, it was suggested to us that it was something that could be put in the truck and taken out again for the pothole season, so the truck would be used for other things. Right.
And. We say pothole season, pothole season is March and April, but we usually have a crew going out after two or three weeks to address the potholes in town, so was it?
Through winter?
Through the whole year.
Well, but my.
Through summer, through.
My, my experience was that the idea of putting it out is easier said than done.
Absolutely.
Right, right. You have to use the backhoe, hook up the chains. Right. How much cheaper is it?
We're probably talking $3,000 to $5,000 cheaper to do a slide-in unit.
That's not, yeah, that's not worth it. Nope.
No.
Especially if somebody was injured.
You're talking 10 to 15, that might be a consideration, but I don't think 3 to 5 is worth it.
Especially if you lost time just.
We did have, I think we have this slide up here with the replacement options. We actually deadhauled the Falcon Asphalt Repair Hot Box and the K&amp;M Trailer Hot Box. So these two, yeah. So the red one, the guy actually dropped off for four days, and was like, take it out, use it, and see what you think. The yellow one was actually out today, and he went over everything with us, and I asked the guys on the crew, I said, "Which one do you like better?" And the features on this K&amp;M seem to be better. The other option that I put on here was the Step, which is the same brand as the slide-in unit we have, and it is a lot more expensive, and we're looking at May before we see it at the original, so these other two, we could have them by January.
I'd be curious, did the gentleman that did the study for us that you've met with, did they have any input for this?
I didn't ask. Might be worth it.
Because, I mean, with all the different types of resurfacing that they're throwing at you in that study, I'd be curious.
You're talking the pavement management?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just curious, I mean, I'm not.
Looking at what he's recommended, there's nothing in there about potholes. It's all sealing the road, the potholes, the Band-Aid, and then you put a seal on over it to preserve it. But I can reach out to him and have.
I just got to be curious, because, I mean, they seem to be, they might actually have some experience with these different things. So I'm not going to recommend, go with your recommendation, I'm just saying.
In running to the plants for three years, you, very rarely did you see a sliding unit, it was always a trailer unit.
Yeah, well, even, well, even at the, yeah, even at the, at the time, it was, it was a cost factor, it was cheaper. Right. So, we don't.
Wondering if they might recommend.
Yeah.
If they've any. If they'd recommend like the Step one, because it's like the brand everybody uses to fix, is that why that's more expensive? Is it the?
I see, honestly, seeing what's there, you either see the Falcon or the K&amp;M.
Do any of the other towns around, I'm just curious if Pope Dale, or Upton, or Oxbridge, and the others around, do anything like this, or how do they?
They all, I mean, every town does potholes, and I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that the other town around us are the most are our trailer units. Like, we, I could sit at the asphalt plant and see 15 trucks there, and then maybe one or two, including ours, that had a sliding unit, but the majority of them are these trailer units. And I can talk to other towns to find out what brands they recommend, and like, most of the time you would see the Falcon or the K&amp;M.
Any significant difference in support? Like, you know, say something breaks in six months, is one of them going to call you back and whatever or not?
So they both come with their warranties, at least a two-year warranty on these. Since they're both local, the Falcon guy is out of Shrewsbury. They're both, they're both Shrewsbury, the salesman I've been dealing with is out of Connecticut, he's a 413 number, but he's around here all the time, he's been in probably five times since I talked to him, and he's, if they're, both of them pick up the phone, they're, we're, we'll help you out, so I don't have any doubts about them being able to help us out if we have issues with these machines.
There's a pretty big price difference between them. So, right?
Between the K&amp;M and the.
38 for the K&amp;M and the.
38 or 50.
50 for the Falcon.
If it's not on a state business.
So, and the K&amp;M, K&amp;M price is through Sourcewell, which I brought up before.
Which one?
Sourcewell is a national bidding system that I brought up to the Finance Director a couple times, so we'll get into it, because they do everything across the board, it's not just highway equipment, it's everything, and because it's a national system, the bidding, you get better prices, because you may be lumped in with a bid from people Washington or Michigan, or it's a, it's a national thing. So this source, this price for the K&amp;M is a Sourcewell price, but he didn't say that he's willing to work with us even if he wanted a Sourcewell to meet that price.
So is this in your budget?
Do you have the money?
It's not.
Yeah. So that's why, what I was, what I wanted to, I would talk to you guys.
Yeah, I'd love to try to get this through a capital planning process to be quite honest. Even if it's, even if you have three things out there, if you can start bringing the people together to kind of figure out this funding and the source, because I mean, ARP is an opportunity, I think capital gap back is an opportunity. Right. That's why I'm thinking timing, John, when you think about how quickly do you need this? Because, you know, I'm thinking, I'm not sure how, I would see the road repair and pothole repair would be more frequent in the warmer months than the winter months.
I can tell you that the end of winter, the first of March or April, we would be out three to four times a week every day doing the potholes.
Right.
I'd like to see a new unit by then, because I honestly don't think.
Yeah, no, that to me is a reasonable timeframe, because that would give us some time to kind of get our feet going on. I'm glad that you came to us, I'm glad you came to us now, not in March, right?
There's no changes.
John, John has a list, I know he does, he keeps talking about this list he has when you get this thing going.
You don't have to make any changes to the trucks or anything, like the hookups are all set?
So actually, the new truck that we're going to get would be, would have, we usually run two trucks, so we keep the guys in between the vehicles when they're doing the work to keep them safe. The new truck, or a 450, either one would be able to tow it, there's no problem.
The truck that has the hot box in it now, you said that it could be used for other purposes?
It could also, you could also tow it with that.
Okay, and other purposes as well for highway, is that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you're taking a dump truck and basically saying you can't use this except for the hot box.
Okay. If you're going to do it from capital stabilization, you need a town meeting. Right, exactly. So, not so much the vote, David, I just want the capital planning process to kind of get rolling a little bit. I would think this would rise to the top, to be quite honest, and we would be limited to the funds that are available, because you've got more of a February type of deadline you'd want it secured by, so you're ready to go.
Right. Both of these guys said, you're talking 60 days before you see it.
Okay. Well, this is a good first pass to show a.
Well, this is a good first pass to show it to us. And, and we'll put it into that capital, capital plan mix. That's the idea and figure out where we're gonna, what, what the different options are and what the, where it leans on the priority list. But I would agree that this is a prior, especially with what you're dealing with, to do it currently, you know?
And so his action items are then, just to ensure that the K and M is the best option?
We'll call it around.
Spending twelve thousand dollars more isn't worth it and...
Right.
Will continue with the capital plan process.
And i- in the meantime, you can reach out to the finance director again and we're in the process of reconstituting the capital plan. Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Dave.
Consider renewal of Inman Hill Road Grow and Forge license agreement. I think Ann, Ann is still on the call. And this was a, this was an agreement that is already in place between, uh, the town of Mendon and, uh, Peter Hawks and his farm to, uh, to, to hay the, to hay the town old land. And, uh, Ann and I had spoken about it. It was just a matter of me signing a document to continue the agreement. I was concerned about, um, insurance, which he provided a certificate that'll be renewed, I think, in February. But, um, I thought since we had a meeting coming up, rather than maybe we would bring it in front of the whole board and discuss it. So Ann, if you wanna, I don't know if I, I know I hit the high points, but if you can talk to us about it.
Sure. They've been doing it for maybe nine years or something, not sure. But originally the town put out like an RFP, who would like to do something with this property. And we wanted to keep the fields open. And so, um, the Hawks were selected and they've been doing a good job. They've, um, taken care of the fields, they keep them open. And, um, it's been a good service for the town and they've been getting fresh hay for their cows. So, you know, we're supporting agriculture also. And they've also invested quite a bit of money in it. And so that's why we continue to use them instead of just having somebody else come in.
I'm up there all the time, including the times that they're, like they just hay recently. And then they just took the stacks off the hill. Like, they're all nice people. They're all accommodating on the end. Like, yeah, I, I agree. It's a, it's a good agreement.
It looks great up there.
It looks great.
Yeah, we go up there all the time.
Any other questions? Anybody looking for motion under number eight?
I moved to renew the Inman Hill, uh, Road Grow and Forge license agreement between the town of Mendon and Peter Hawks for a three-year period at five dollars per year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks very much. And, um, let's talk about the, uh, the library, um, the garage. And I think it's, it says here the rectory, but you, you folks from, if you can all, I want you to step up and, I know it says here, discuss the library rectory. But I, I know we kind of encompass this to talk about the condition, what we're gonna do about the rectory, which for, for everybody that doesn't know, uh, the previous St. Michael's church, including the rectory was purchased by the town several years ago and renovated into a library. The, the Taft Library was moved to that location. The library is in, is in the, in the church. The rectory, um, and garage next door, um, is not used. It's kind of been mothballed. Some of the, uh, um, electrical and, and heat from the church, I think, is still in the, uh, some of, some of it is still within the rectory. There's also a detached garage, which I would say, um, thirty years ago was on its last legs.
That's what's referred to as the carriage house?
Yes.
That's correct.
That was called disambiguation.
Yeah.
So there's a detached garage and an attached garage.
Yes.
So calling the detached garage the carriage house maybe helps clear things up.
Yes.
So, what can you tell us?
So, um, just recently, the building is...
I'm sorry, can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I apologize. Sure. I'm Lisa Michael. I'm the chairperson of the library trustees.
And I'm Gabrielle Pochello, vice chair of the library trustees.
So we, um, we originally approached, approached the board about our concerns with the carriage house, um, the condition especially, um, which is what brought the, um, building inspector out there. And his report, I think you all have a copy of that from this week. Um, and he has deemed that that building is not structurally sound. Um, and our, part of our concern came with the neighbor next door had been using that after, to store his own personal items in.
In, in, and around, yes.
In and around that space. So, and our concern was just safety, um, because we don't want anybody in that building, especially library patrons or any children that may be using that back parking lot, um, in the summer especially. We tend to do, or the library tends to do a lot of functions out there. Um, and we have tried to put some caution tape around the doors, but the doors are warped, so we really can't even close them. So that's, I guess our biggest concern really is that carriage house.
Right.
And, and trying to make sure that we don't have an un- structurally sound structure on town property. So, did I cover everything?
Um, as far as the carriage house itself, yes.
Okay. I know that we did have the building inspector, um, inspect the property like you just talked about.
Yeah.
And besides that, there was also, he, he had some concerns about, um, exactly where the property lines are.
Yep.
And about, um, where recent pavement was added.
By the neighbor, yes.
Yeah. So what we've asked is, uh, what he's, we're actually in the process of having it surveyed so that we know exactly where the, where the line is. Um, and we've actually reached out to town council who was involved. Um, and she's in, dealing with the building inspector to get this through and take it to next steps to resolve the issues.
Okay.
So, um, is there anything else you'd like to bring to our attention or?
So I didn't, I don't know how much of, of this, it, it says rectory on the, on the agenda, so I wasn't sure, um, how much of that is gonna be talked about. But we did, we do have a working group of what potentially could be that rectory building could be used for. And we're kind of, um, you know, we've met a couple of times and we've walked through the building. And we also had the building inspector inspect that building as far as the structural integrity of it. Um, that's, so that's also part of the same report. Um, so I didn't know if there was anything further. We, there's a couple of things that he pointed out that needed to be fixed as far as, um, that there's some leaking going on, which potentially could be the flashing around, only the flashing around the chimney, which might be a minimal fix, um, compared to, you know, reconstructing the whole thing. Um, so that's like the initial stage because in the basement of that building is the heating unit or the...
The hot water.
The hot water unit and...
For the library.
For the library. So it's, it's still, we still use that for that. Um, so we don't want anything leaking into the basement.
Yeah, also his report says very good condition structurally, but if the roof's leaking, that won't last long. So.
Right.
I don't want it to deteriorate anymore.
Right. So that was, uh, without going into the big reasons of what the working committee is thinking for that building, it's more about keeping the roof so that it's not leaking and, right, is the initial stage.
Structural integrity of that.
Right.
And again, we talk, we keep going back to this capital, capital plan. Um, a, a few years ago, I think, is it Amy Farrell was, um, I'm sorry, I apologize. Who had kinda headed up a, a proposal, there were three different proposals, right, to turn it into a enclosed structure or turn it into a pavilion.
Those three plans all included knocking the rectory down.
Completely.
Um, and we're talking about potentially trying to reuse part of it, potentially, obviously. You know, we're not...
Just kind of a fourth option is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yes, yes. We're revisiting what, what they did come up with in their initial plans of those three options. And we're revisiting to say, okay, what, what else could we do? What are some other options?
Adaptive reuse.
Right.
There's potentially three things I hear. One, the carriage house and the boundaries.
Yes.
The town council is gonna run with it.
Needs to get, needs to get resolved.
Yes.
It's gonna get demolished, the carriage house.
The carriage house, yes.
We believe that as well.
Evaluation of the root, the leaking.
Yes.
Which is probably smaller than capital planning in terms of understanding what the fix would be, right? We could probably just...
Well, my question for that would be, what would the library do? Since, since the building houses the hot water.
Yeah.
What would the, what, what has the trustees done about maintenance to the library proper now?
So technically the rectory does not, our understanding is the rectory does not belong to the library. And the maintenance of the library, of the rectory doesn't belong specifically to the library. Now, we do try to maintain that room where the water heater is and there, we do maintain some heat in there, but we really haven't done anything else with that structure. And it's not necessarily in our budget to, to maintain that structure.
Right.
If we're done with facilities management and our longer view, the library and the rectory would fall under the purview of that from, uh, if we had facility.
But we don't have that right now.
Right. But, so, but somebody, somebody, somebody or somebody.
Yeah.
Needs to take an action to evaluate the roof to see what would take to secure or stop the leaking.
Sure, then later, sure.
Right.
Then there's the larger effort, which is what you're looking at, which is reuse of the rectory. That to me would fall into this capital planning process we've talked about.
Right.
So you, you'd wanna submit that, get on, get that on the radar whenever you see fit.
Yes.
The roof, I think we probably need to take an action sooner than later.
Right.
I would agree.
Agreed.
David, could you deal with Andrew, the library director, about getting it checked?
Yep.
Getting at least...
Okay.
So we'll get that piece addressed. And as I said, town council is, is working with the building inspector to take next steps about demolishing the building.
Demolishing the building as well.
The carriage.
The carriage house part of the building.
As well as the, as well as the boundaries.
The boundaries and the pavement, okay.
So we can address those issues and everything that goes along with it.
Okay.
And that's definitely, I think, the, really what this potential meeting agenda is about.
That's how it started, right.
Yes.
But it was a good idea to talk about all of it.
Right.
Right. Yeah. And while we had the building inspector have to check all of it.
Yeah.
Right.
In terms of scope, the flashing is a pretty simple thing.
Right, yeah.
Repairing the entire roof is another part of it.
Right. So just based on our initial assessment of just, um, laypeople, if you will, going in there saying, oh, here's the leak and, oh, look at this chimney's right there. It's very good possibility that's what it is. But the building inspector, I believe, also agreed with that. Um, so it's just a matter of having a roofing company get up there and look at it and see, you know, and give us bids or whatever. Um, so I guess what it comes down to is how do we determine whose budget, what budget that comes out of and, right?
Yeah. Well, I think you were already talking about working with Andrew on that.
Right.
Okay.
The first, first step is just to get, to get somebody to figure out, um, where the leak is coming from and how, how significant it is.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Um, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, sorry. Um, before any of those structures come down, they do need to go through the process of the demolition delay. Um, and, you know, we, we have to hold a hearing because they are seventy-five years or older. That carriage house does have historical significance.
No, the, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the church was built and, let me do the math, was fifty...
Fifty-five, what was it, four?
Fifty-four, fifty-five?
It was, I think fifty-four, so it's close.
We're just, I believe, I'm not sure about the carriage house, if it was different, but I believe from when we were talking to, our name's escaping me, um, Jane?
Yeah.
Jane Lowell, that the church and the rectory and the garage attached is just shy of seventy-five years old. I'm not a hundred percent sure if the carriage house was built at the same time, but...
Yeah, the carriage house is a, a leftover piece from the property that originally sat on that, um, on the property where St. Michael's is now. But I mean, it really, it's a procedural thing. And, you know, this is where we get into muddy waters when, you know, um, it really has to be a joint agreement. So if you guys wouldn't mind making an appointment with the historic commission and just talking, um, and presenting your, you know, what, your information, I think that would be very helpful.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Kathy, could you combine that to make that the hearing as well? Just because it sounds like there's, this risk of safety.
Yeah, it's, it's urgent. According to the, according to the building inspector, it's well passed. Um, so to say it being safe.
Oh yeah. But I, I, you know, I hate to remind you that we lost a very significant barn that was under, you know, mass historic, mass historic's purview. Um, and that was because the building inspector decided it was time for it to come down, um, even though things were in the works to repair or repurpose. So I, I mean, I think if we can just, you know, get the conversation rolling, um, and then maybe even put the rectory on as well, that would be great because then, you know, all the, all the technical stuff is done from our end.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't disagree. It's fine. Just all we're asking is just
Accelerate.
To do it now.
Yeah, no.
Whatever you need, whatever you need from us, if you can deal with, with, with David to schedule the, the hearing and the meeting, um, let's get it scheduled and let's, let's do everything right, but let's do it quickly. Is that acceptable to you?
Uh, sure, yep.
Yeah, especially as far as the carriage house is concerned.
Yep, understood.
Right. Yeah. All right. Thanks.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, cause at this point, we're, we're not talking about just demolishing the rectory at this point.
Right.
We're, we're looking into options to not have to do that.
Yeah, just to fix the, fix the roof.
Right.
But, but clearly from what, from what the building inspector said.
Right.
We, we need to take action soon.
Yes.
Kathy makes a great point, so.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Anybody have any other questions for library trustees?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. All right, let's, uh, circle back to, to number four with, uh, with the police chief. He's, he's on remotely.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, chief. Hi. Um, so I'm asking for an appointment of, um, Mr. Donahue. He, if you remember, was an employee here, um, six, seven months ago. He, um, took a full-time spot here, spent a little bit of time here. Um, he had a background in corrections, a long background in corrections, um, went to the Bridge Academy to be a police officer. Um, and then he left to go to the elevators union. Um, what happened is when he came here, he had had his name in the elevators union for five to six years, just never thought it was gonna come through. Um, just bad timing on his part that when he decided to make a career move here, that they actually came calling at the same time. Uh, he took a little while to make a decision, decided to go there because it was better for his family. Um, but he is full-time academy trained and still does have, uh, the skills to be a police officer. The union has worked with me. Um, it's actually partly, um, their request to put him on as a part-time officer. It'll help alleviate some of the forced shifts that we have, um, prisoner watches, um, things that we just don't have the manpower to fill right now. And on top of it, um, we just don't have the people who like to work overtime that used to. Um, so with the current staffing that we have, um, it's tough to fill the overtime shifts. Um, so he, he's a good option for us right now.
Chief, for everybody's edu- edification, um, how many full-time offices do you have?
So we have, um, thirteen patrol and a chief, so fourteen total.
And what, what's the FBI recommendation based on the size of Mendon to be fully staffed?
For patrol, it's always been two-point-five and then you add in your other, your other specialties. So two-point-five per thousand and then you would add, that would give you a base number and then you'd add the chief, you would add a school resource officer, um, and then any other specialty positions. So we should probably be somewhere between seventeen to nineteen. Um, when I became chief, I was able to get one more additional position at the time. We were able to work in the operational budget. So we had thirteen when I became chief. We got up to fourteen. Um, the past six or seven years, every year I try to build an, uh, officer into the budget, but there's just been more pressing needs and, um, we haven't had the, the money or operational funds to add another officer. Um, so I've, I've tried over the past six or seven years. Um, if we can get up to the right staffing, um, the shifts aren't, aren't an issue because then we have the shift stacked the way they should be. We only allow one day off. People aren't allowed application the same day. So, um, then we don't really have an overtime issue. Then overtime is used for what it's supposed to be for, for court, specialties, um, callouts, special events, um, you know, major emergencies, stuff like that. Right now, a lot, a lot of portion of our overtime is used just to, to fill the time off that's due.
And just historically, when you were hired, it was, I think it was ninety-seven, you were, you were one of the officers that was hired full-time to replace all of the all of the part-time officers that the town ceased to use because they weren't all full-time academy trained, correct?
Correct, yeah. So I was, uh, one of the first three, um, when they, when we decided to go full-time back in ninety-seven. And again, I mean, you might be wrong back then, so you know, it was just a variety of different training, you guys that are experienced, you guys that weren't. So it was kind of hard. We didn't have a, we didn't have a good training system for the part-timers at that time. And we actually, you know, could have done better, I, as a whole, in the state, not just as men in general. But when twenty-twenty came around, we have the post standard now. So everybody has to be trained exactly the same. So there is not, there's not a, a difference in training anymore like there used to be. So it's kind of more a level playing field for everybody. So a part-timer, even though they're a part-timer, they could be a full-timer if they want to now. They, they have the same exact training.
So this is kind of a Band-Aid, but it's a way to get the extra staffing you need.
Correct. Um, and it's a cost savings. Again, it makes the union happy. They have, they always have first bid at the overtime shifts. But we've been forcing a lot of people in. If they don't come in, um, the part-time officers are at a lower rate. So, oh, it still comes out of the overtime, but now I'm able to stretch the overtime a little farther because of being anywhere from a fifty-dollar to a seventy-dollar rate now jumps down to thirty dollars for the part-timer, who has the same tra- training level and experience. And again, it's a Band-Aid until, you know, in the future, we can figure out long-term, can we get the department up to the, the proper staffing that we need to?
All right, does anybody have any other questions? I'd be looking for a motion to appoint, uh, Andrew Donahue, who was a previous employee, but to the position of part-time police officer.
I move to appoint Andrew Donahue to the position of part-time police officer at a rate of thirty dollars, twenty-five cents, point seventy-five per hour.
Give us your second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I know there's a lot to swallow. If any of you guys have any questions later on or any, anything you want to talk about with it, feel free to give me a call anytime. While they're happy to chat with you about it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, any of you, you both can come up and, uh, talk about the, the, the latest results of the water study last week. I, I think we have someone on the call from.
And we have Scott Salvucci.
There we go, and Dylan.
Dylan's.
Back on again.
Always here.
So we got some, some, some good news.
So. Yeah, I was just going to do a quick overview again for the board, um, about kind of how we got here. We've been fortunate that we've done what we considered phase one, two, and two N and maybe B, all on, um, grant money and earmarks. We have not, to date, you know, and for the foreseeable future, we have not spent a penny of town money on this. And we're getting close to the culmination of this phase-two project, and they've been out drilling, and you're going to hear about it. We were fortunate enough to get another grant and another earmark to walk into phase-three, which I think they're going to talk about a little bit. We're not there yet. We haven't signed even a contract to get there yet. But, um, we've been guiding our, our consultants from Woodward and Curran with Vin from the Water Commission, Mike, Dave, as well as Dan Byer, um, and Dylan and myself. And we meet when they need some direction. And we just met last week. I couldn't make it, but Mike was there and Vin. And so Mike just felt it was important that you hear what we heard, which I thought was good news. So, uh, I know Vin wanted to say a few words, and then we'll give it to Woodward and Curran, if that's okay, Mike.
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Vincent Roy. I'm, uh, on the Water Commission, and obviously I'm, I'm a resident here in Menden. I did sit in, as Jack just said.
Vinny, what's your, what's your background?
My background, uh, I've got forty years in the drinking water industry. So I was a former director of public works for the town. I'm up there, I'm currently the executive director of the Sudbury Water District. But, uh, I'm forty years in the industry since I got out of the Navy many, many years ago. So, yeah, this is my background. And so I'm really excited about where we're at right now. It's a very, uh, we're, we're in a really good position right now, based on, uh, uh, the hard work that Woodward and Curran has, has done. You know, we're really on the ground floor, we're, you know, developing our water system. You don't see a lot of communities do that now. You know, my tenure, I seen a couple of them down in Cape recently do it. But, um, for the residents here in Sudbury, where we've got public water, we're getting it from Hope Dale. It's a really good opportunity to get off Hope Dale's water supply and, and develop our own source.
Yeah, it, it's important just to point out that the, the focus of all of this is, uh, a public water supply for, for commercial development, for sixteen and for Route sixteen and potentially Route one forty, maybe some municipal use. And I know, I, I think Hope Dale has a well that's got, um, they don't, they have a capacity issue when they were looking at one point. So I just, I want to make it clear for everybody who's listening, you know, we're not trying to get everybody off of their Artesian wells in Menden onto a public water supply.
Good point, Mike.
Just, I just want to make that clear that.
Yeah.
I, I mean, although it sounds like this aquifer, this well, could potentially do that. That's not what the focus of this is, and it's still a sewer piece, right?
And I wanted to say, right, Mike, this is very, very early on, uh, to, to develop, uh, to develop your own public water supply, it, it, it's years in the making. So there's, there's going to be some phases, which, which Scott and, uh, the Woodward and Curran here are going to lay out, uh, with what, uh, what they've gotten their report. But, uh, and that's all I was going to say. So I'll, I'll, I'll let these guys present their act before, because they did a lot of work, so.
But I just want to say, I, I appreciate the fact that this is your, you know, this, this is your professional area of expertise, and that you're giving it to the town that you live in. And we appreciate that because it's great to have somebody with your expertise and caliber actually kind of guiding things in that department, you know?
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so Scott Salvucci with Woodward and Curran, Jack, Vin, you know, Mike, thank you for, uh, for, for the intro. And, yeah, we're excited. We're excited about what we've been working on. We're excited about the teamwork and the partnership we've had with, with you all, uh, through phase-one and into phase-two and, um, some very positive results. We know that Mike gave the board a little bit of a preview last week, um, during one of your select board meetings. And, um, so we're here to kind of, you know, give a little bit more detail on that. And as Vin said, it's still a little early, but what we've been looking into, um, there's one site that is showing real potential. So I know Mike mentioned to you, uh, last week that part of our scope of work was to look at well investigation sites and wastewater, uh, the opportunity to, to partner with, with, um, Hope Dale. So on the drinking water side, four locations that we had scoped to, to look at, those four locations were picked as part of the phase-one work we did last year. And we started with the two public sites, which are kind of the path of least resistance, right? Let's look at what the town already owns, see what we can get there before we go knocking on private sites. And two of the sites, uh, public sites, one was nearby the highway department, did not show the results that would be favorable. And then we had a second site in the southern area of town, uh, that had some really favorable results, uh, both from quantity of water and quality of water, uh, based on short-term pumping testing. And so some of the discussion we had, um, as, you know, kind of the, the, the core team that we've been working with since phase-one with the town, we, we talked through some of the direction and, uh, there's still, there's still steps required, uh, to be looking at for, for this, this positive and, and hopeful site. The next steps will be to look at a prolonged well test, pumping test. So let's go and pump this for longer than four hours. I believe it's a, it's a ten-day pump test. We'll look at the water quality after that. We'll look at, you know, what kind of yield and, and gallons per minute we're getting, uh, rate, uh, from that testing. And, and so we'll continue to move through. So there's still some short-term schedule, long-term schedule items to be, to be ironed out. But right now, based on the very, very favorable results, our focus is to now be looking at this particular site in the southern portion of town, do a little bit more due diligence, more investigation, increase that level of certainty that this is a, this is a positive site to work from. And then there'll be things like, okay, well, how do we protect this aquifer? There's going to be, like Mike mentioned, maybe there's some discussion about aquifer protection district within the bylaws. There'll be DE, DEP permitting that's required to, before there's use of that aquifer. So there's still a lot of steps. And in the short term, the steps are to really cert, to, uh, increase our level of confidence in this site through prolonged pump testing, rather than the short-term pump testing that, that's been very favorable, so. I think that's, that might be where we might want to just kind of brief you on, on the drinking water side. We can stop there high level for a second. We can jump into wastewater as well, so.
Scott, I was just going to jump in. As far as protection, we're really talking about a, um, water protection district, which hopefully will, like, be identified there, it'd be a zoning article that, you know, we limit the uses there, regardless to protect the water supply. And there's also some bylaws that, um, could protect it as well, we can look into.
So having the, uh, moving forward on some zoning, things like that.
Well. Maybe, yeah, we got time, certainly. I want to make sure, yeah, I don't see why not, you know?
Vinny and I had talked about the, the water board taking lead to put a, a bylaw in place to protect the area. Just, just as a little bit more background, the area that they went into is, is some town-owned land that was, uh, we acquired twenty years ago. And I spoke to Ann Mazur. I don't know if Anna's still, she's not, she. I know, we spoke about there's, there's some land adjacent to that, which is privately owned land, which basically is on both sides of, of the river down there that goes by, uh, Colonial Drive and the potential of using community preservation money, um, to even purchase that to add to what we already own. And in the area that we already own, when that conservation restriction was put on that property, the town acquired it, actually, one of the purposes was for a public water supply, and there is, uh, a, an easement already built in the property for that purpose.
The other thing I was going to add too, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I believe this is going to be, uh, a free record set anyways, in order to get DEP approval for, for, uh, for a public water supply source for the town.
Right.
Yeah, we would have to have an old, uh, water protection overlay district already in place, already in a box. So this would be one of the low-hanging fruit that we could, we could actually go after right away. This Mike just said that we would, we would take lead on drafting it, presenting it, and then, uh, hopefully adopt it at the annual town meeting.
What committees do you have to go through? Does that have to go through planning?
Any zoning.
Well, we would drop the language, and maybe the planning board would have to review it.
We would, we would put the, put it on the, on the warrant for the, for the water protection by law.
Okay.
But clearly, anything to do with zoning is the planning. They would have to be.
You would, you would be doing that shopping.
They're required by law to have a public hearing, and that has to have a prior town meeting. I'll brief the board. I have not briefed the board on this, but I will, I think, I don't know when our next meeting is, when in December. But at the next meeting, I'll brief them and, and make sure that they know this is coming.
Yeah, I believe there would be two bylaws. It'd be the oval, the water protection overlay district. And then anytime you've got a public water supply source, you've got zone one, zone two. So, so zone one is a two-hundred-foot radius around the actual well. So you've got to have a bylaw that, that talks about zone one to protect that area.
Zero happens.
Yeah, zero activity, pretty much, except for water supply.
The overlay district, some uses can happen.
Correct. Yeah. Luckily, you have some overlay district experience here in Menden, so.
Every town likes overlay districts because they bypass certain things. Anyway, we'll be working.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Wastewater.
Yeah. Well, yeah, thanks. And, um, you're right, Vin, there's, there's some really good benefits, even if for some reason, uh, the town decided not to continue to move forward past what maybe the grant funding has in, in store. And again, we'll continue to work with Jack and put in more grant funding applications throughout this, uh, as we go. There'll be next year, there'll be rounds to continue to, to look into. But, um, I wanted to introduce also Greg McNeil as our lead project engineer. He's, he's on the call as well. That's who you see there as well. So, um, he gave, he gave a nice background, uh, last week, so. But stepping over to wastewater, um, we have been, uh, in, in communication with Hope Dale's water and sewer manager. So we've been talking with them. They've shared some of their past studies. They've done, uh, past studies to evaluate their collection system, uh, when looking at infiltration inflow. So II, kind of that leakage that's coming into their system or inflows coming into their system. Uh, and they've also done some studies on their treatment facility to see how the processes are working. And, uh, is there, you know, capacity issues? Are there bottlenecks? Are there, you know, upgrades required? So we've looked at some of those past studies. They're a little older, uh, and so what we did find is that, you know, the limiting factor might not necessarily be the II, uh, the infiltration inflow, the leakage going into the system. Some of the limitations with Hope Dale system may be more about their processes at the facility. But these, these studies are a little bit older now. They're on the, you know, order of magnitude of about ten years old. So we're talking with Hope Dale. We're getting a little bit more of a current feel of, of what's happening there. You know, certainly, there's been development within town. Things have changed and since these studies are done. So we're, next steps are to continue to talk with Hope Dale, get a better understanding of their current challenges, current capacity, and then evaluate the feasibility of, of possibly tying in wastewater, select and prioritized areas of Menden into Hope Dale, and what that might require. Or then, you know, continue to think about would, um, you know, would a facility in the town of Menden be feasible? So, so some of the things that we're still working through on the wastewater side, but some nice, uh, information and background and, and some dialogue with Hope Dale, which is encouraging, so.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I have a, kind of a, a question back to the initial report. So if I remember correctly, and it's been a long time, when the initial feasibility report was highlighted, that particular site was highlighted as less desirable just because it was further away from all of the proposed infrastructure. Do you have any concerns about that? Or is that going to be?
On, is that the drinking water?
Yeah, drinking water, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's okay, yeah. Yeah, um, you know, it, it will require more transmission main to kind of pump the water to the desired, you know, economic development locations, Route sixteen, Route one forty. It's, you know, it's not the center of town, so there'll be more piping required. But, you know, that's, that's something to work through, something to think about. But it, it also does not, um, take away from the fact that this is a, a pretty valuable resource to the community, a very high, uh, produ- producing well that, that really, if, if the town is on board with and wants to, uh, pursue, there's grant funding out there, there's infrastructure improvement, there's, there's all, all sorts of funding mechanisms, for, you know, a little bit of a, a, a higher cost because of some additional piping to get that source piped to these priority locations. You're right, so.
Scott, what you, what you had told me was that this isn't the first time that that area was, was, um, explored for water, right? Because wasn't there a, can you tell us about that?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe I'll pass that to Greg. You know, Greg, if you want to kind of speak to, uh, what you were mentioning last week about, you know, the Milford Water Company examining on one side of the river, and, and we actually looked at the other side, so.
Yeah, that's right. There, there were a, a series of borings that were installed in the nineteen-seventies and nineteen-eighties. Most clustered about a thousand feet to the south, and another cluster about a thousand feet to the north, and then a handful, a couple hundred feet to the east on the other side of the river. And they found some favorability in, in all three of those areas, uh, but nothing excellent. And, but where we drilled is, is on the opposite side of the river, likely because we were actually able to get access because the town now owns that property, whereas they likely did not own it back in the nineteen-seventies and eighties. So that, the, the access that was provided by the town owning this parcel allowed us to get in there. And, and we were, ended up, uh, striking into a, a productive aquifer.
And Greg, that, this area is actually a little bit closer to, because it's on this side of the river, right? It's on the Menden side rather than towards the Blackstone side. Am I oriented correctly or?
Yes, you're correct. So that's, that's another, um, uh, aspect of favorability is it wouldn't require us to put a transmission main underneath the river, which can be an expensive ordeal.
And who was it that, who actually did the exploration? But was it the Milford Water Company at the time?
The, I, I don't know who the proponent was, uh, but the contractor was, uh, Lane Christiansen. They're, they're an old well-drilling firm that's no longer active, uh, but they, they did a, a lot of drilling in Massachusetts. You read any hydrogeological reports from well drilling in the seventies and eighties, and very likely it was Lane Christiansen doing the work.
Yeah, and they were very reputable as well. Yeah, and they were very reputable as well.
I, 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 I think it may, I know actually moving ten years forward in the nineties. There was a proposal to put a power plant in Mendon down on the Blackstone line. And ultimately it ended up being located in Blackstone. And I think part of it could have been a water source because they needed water there too. But when you're saying they drilled in the seventies and eighties, that's even further back in time. So maybe it's not related, maybe it's not related to that. I, I don't know. But we did definitely get the, 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 the land probably twenty or twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, I was gonna comment too. The thing with the area there that, uh, that's got the high yields. One of the, one of the characteristics you wanna look at is the soil condition. So about thirty-five feet below the surface. It's nice, uh, both, uh, uh, bony gravel type material, you know? It's kind of soil that's very transmissible for, uh, moving water, for being a high volume of water for public water supply. And I don't know if you guys had the, the profile on the other side of the river, but, but it just seemed like we, we hit a really ideal spot here. So it's, it's something definitely worth pursuing.
What's the macro timeline? If, say, everything's perfect and we, this moves forward, what's the macro timeline look like? And is there any thought around Route sixteen being?
One more time on Route sixteen?
I know Route sixteen works gonna get done, right? Changed. I hear piping has to go in and we're thinking about Route sixteen. Is there any way these things converge or is it gonna be definitely staggered?
It's gonna be staggered.
Just, just the permitting alone for a public water supply.
Two to three years?
No, seven to ten. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I pull back my, every single question.
Well, it used to be two to three, but.
No, not for public water supply. It's a, it's a very, that's a process. But then, uh, you know, we'll have to put all kinds of funding in place because not just, not just developing a well. Instead of do some, some localized treatment at that well. The water quality was very good, but there's still gonna have to be some treatment. It's got the iron and manganese which needs to be filtered out in order to be.
But there's no PFAS, which I thought was a interesting.
Yeah, it's zero PFAS, which is really good. And the pH of the water was, was near neutral, uh, just under seven, which I thought was very.
You know, it brings to mind that even if, we're talking seven, eight years, whatever it is. And even if it's longer, the fact that we have to protect this is very, very important. If not for now, for later. Just like Milford looked at it. Well, now we're looking at it. Our predecessors might look at it. I don't know. Successors. Um, I, so it's beneficial. We need to protect it and keep it.
Yeah, for the, for the town, for the population going forward. We're laying the groundwork, but.
To have a resource like that and that clean, huh, in, in Massachusetts.
Right, so, so Vin, I mean, there's, there's years of work still left. Uh, there's, there's more work to, to increase the level of confidence in the site. And then there's the permitting, and then there's the design, uh, and then there's the construction. So it is, it is years in the making, but it's, you know, this is something that, um, after decades of, you know, study after study. Uh, this is, this is becoming something that's real. This is exciting. I think there's a lot of energy around it, uh, from the meeting we had last week. Um, you know, this is very positive results and, and we're excited to continue to look into this source. And, um, you know, it's becoming a real possible, possibility for the town. And, you know, based on the infrastructure and, um, you know, stimulus funding and things like that. This, this may be not a better time, uh, than since maybe the seventies to do something like this, so.
So. We all have smiles on your face, so that feels like enough.
We, I just wanna make sure that somebody reaches out to Congress and Oshinclaus's office. Because we had their staffer in here a few months ago. I know, David, if you can reach out to her.
I'd love to sit down. I, I was just gonna add last.
Oh, sure.
The last thing is we do have funding, as I said, a grant of a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe. And an earmark for phase three, what I call phase three. And that's for the design, to start designing it, what the treatment would be, what it would look like. What the piping would look like and that kind of preliminary stuff. So we're just inching along. Um, we've gotten three grants in a row on this. I, I'm worried, no pun intended, the well might go dry.
Yeah, uh, the, the current, the current grant we're working under, uh, along with the earmark, that current grant is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The grant we, we put in with you, Jack, last year was two hundred eighty-five thousand.
Oh, it's two, yeah, but they didn't give us that. They gave us.
I think we requested three hundred and they gave us two eighty-five. So positive.
Good track record.
Yeah, all the more reason to just communicate that we're serious about this and that everybody is feeling good about moving forward. I think that's.
Well, I know that, that about a year ago, actually it was actually Kathy Schofield that had arranged a tour of the, uh. Of the historical district. And I had, uh, gone for a walk with, with the, with Senator Fatman. And Representative Brian Maury and, uh, Jake Oshinklaus. And actually talked to him about this and about, um, affordable housing. And how the housing, and Jack is one that pointed out about the water and sewer tying into the affordable housing and the economic development. And mixed use properties and the overlay district.
And the environment.
And the environment. And he said to me that he would support all of that. And he said that is the, you know, at, at the center, this is housing. And that is the most urgent issue that's, that he's dealing with right now. He said in the district in Massachusetts. So, um, you know, I kind of kept in contact with him and his staffer. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna dry up if we can continue to show progress.
It's trying to dry up. Well, dry.
Scott, whether he could put together a one page synopsis or overview that would, uh, summarize where we're at. Uh, for the congressman's office so they have a clear understanding of what it is that we've done and what we're planning to do. And, and how important it is.
Maybe, uh, and maybe Dylan, Dylan and, and Jack could, could facilitate that and, and.
Yeah.
Meeting is set up.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've been, um, planning, you know, an executive summary for, you know, the report portions of, of what we're working through. Um, but if you have a, if you have a sense of timeline that we should target, that'll be helpful for us too. Because, you know, we're putting together the report that kind of summarizes what we did for the well investigation on the two public locations and, uh, the favorable findings. Um, and the wastewater is still a work in progress. We're still, you know, talking with Hope Dale, right? So, uh, but if you could, you know, give us some, some sense of timeline, we'll pull something together for sure and work with Jack and Dylan on that.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
That's good news.
Y'all very much for your efforts and your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Right, um, let's talk about, uh, possible holiday party. We talked about it last week, um, a couple, a couple of things. Obviously, um, the holidays are here. Um, I know that the, that the, that, um, David is planning something in-house here for the town hall, for the town hall employees. But, um, a few years ago, actually when Galiford's first opened, um, we actually did a, a holiday gathering. For all of the elected officials and volunteers and everybody down the senior center and just everybody who was. Who was involved in the, in the run, running of the town. And, um, you know, we had talked about possibly doing it again at Galiford's. And, you know, the other thing subsequently, um, we all know that our, uh, police chief, uh, Chief Kessler. Um, his, his last day is, um, actually, um, December twenty-second. And although they're going to do, the fire department's gonna do an open house on that Friday during the day. For the, um, uh, you know, for the fire department, for people from different towns to stop in. Um, and certainly anybody to stop in. Um, I talked to the deputy fire chief and he's gonna have, uh, Chief Kessler there. So the people that would like to would, could recognize him or at least greet him on the twenty-first. As well. So the, the, the night we talked about was Thursday night, December twenty-first. Thanks, Vinny. That, on that evening, uh, Galiford's actually has, uh, an event planned for that night with live entertainment. Um, called Let's Get Toasty. And it's, uh, it's in the restaurant. Um, I, I think it, it goes from, uh. I, I think it goes, it's six thirty to, right, six thirty to nine. Um, I had proposed that we reserve, uh, two hours from five to seven PM in the, in the room downstairs. Um, just for, for appetizing, for people to drop in. If people want, they can make a reservation if they wanna have dinner upstairs and we may all want to do that. Um, and just go on the evening. Plus, you know, the, the zoo is open for their, for their, um, light show. If people wanna go into the, but, um, I don't know. Everybody had a chance to look at this proposal. I have a written copy of it here. But you can see there's, you know, room rental and then, um, different apps. And then it would go, it would go from, uh, um, like I said, from, from five to, from five to seven. Or seven thirty is when it ends.
Who all would be invited? Like this would be for, uh, town boards?
Yes, town boards and committees, volunteers. Um, you know, we, we came up, these numbers are based on a hundred people. Which I was told that was a good number. It's about what we had last time. Um, and it would, you know, what we did last time was just open it up to any, you know, including all the seniors that regularly go to the senior center. They were invited to come. You know, the lib- library trustees and anybody that volunteers the library. Um, you know, anyone that was interested, again, that's involved in, in town government, you know, would be welcome. So, um, you know, the price tag.
Committees and employees.
Yes, employees, yes, employees, yep. And, and, and unlike this one, it was gonna be town. I think you left public safety out.
Yeah, public firing.
Yeah, but I would, if, if they'd like, I'd also invite them to come too. So it's anybody who wants to stop in, you know? Um, that's what, that's what my intention is of it. Right. Um, so you can see there's a, there is a, uh, amount due of fifty-four hundred and change. Um, which I think is reasonable for what, what we wanna do. We have that in our budget.
So what, what part of the budget is that?
Sounds great.
Yeah, I think, I think it, yeah.
And I like the.
Volunteers would appreciate it.
I like the after.
Right, and that you see it's right here that they would offer, I think it's, I think it's.
Fifteen dollar.
Yeah, fifteen dollars a person. And, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's outside fire pits right there. It's, it's a tremendous, tremendous layout. You know, so if, if, uh, if you all would agree, then I would, I guess I would look for a. Promotion to authorize us to, to, uh, engage Galiford's based on this vote. Salute. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Can I just talk a bit about what we're doing?
Yes, please do. Well, I was gonna, if you wanna do that now, I, I don't know, can we, um, do you wanna do the licenses first and, and then do your report?
Well, it was under celebrations. I just figured.
Oh, sure. All right, let's talk about it. Absolutely. Sure.
We're doing a smaller party here at town hall. Um, we're gonna have, we sent out, actually Ellen sent out a survey. Whether we should do potluck or have it catered. The decision was to have it catered. Um, we are going to, um, uh, have a Yankee swap. Uh, cookie swap, which I've never experienced.
Cookie swaps are awesome.
And, uh, we're looking at approximately twenty employees, department heads, circle of town hall staff. And, uh, we're gonna have it catered through, uh. Believe us in Milford. So we've got all the details. It's Thursday, December fourteenth. Uh, what we'd like to do is close town hall down for two hours. Uh, one thirty to three thirty to allow people to actually enjoy without having to run, come back and run down, come back and run down. Um, the event and, uh, we're gonna Christmas music, hopefully have a small tree. It'll be just sort of, uh, uh, you know, good, a good time to, you know, enjoy the holiday with your fellow employees.
That's wonderful.
So are we okay with, uh, shutting?
Absolutely.
Town hall down? Do we wanna vote on that or?
So you, uh, look for a motion to close, what, what time is the party at?
One thirty to, uh, three thirty.
So we just close town hall at one thirty on, on that's.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth. Second. All those in favor? Should get that posted on the, uh, website sooner than later. And post, post both, both things. And have her, maybe she can send an email to all the email users on the system. Let's, um.
Get to reading?
Yeah. All right, so let's go to, what we all said, we're gonna go to fourteen, is that okay? All right, so. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the following twenty twenty-four annual license renewals. I'm gonna run through these. Please correct me if I mispronounced something, but for the restaurant, all alcohol. Common Vitular Entertainment License, Miss Mendon Diner, fourteen Oxbridge Road, Building sixteen. GV Mendon Management, Grandview Ballroom, six Nipmuck Drive, Willbrook Restaurant, LLC, DBA Willbrook Restaurant, Hastings Street. Q and T Restaurant LLC, Alicante Mediterranean Grill and Restaurant Lounge, eighty-four Oxbridge Road. NLCK Inc., DBA Lowell's Restaurant, seventy-five Cape Road. And Haveco Two, DBA Greenhouse Wood Fire Pub, uh, three Cape Road. We have a general on-premise all alcohol common vitular Miss Mendon Diner, two, twenty Oxbridge Road. General on-premises all alcohol adult entertainment, Showtime Entertainment LLC, forty-nine Milford Street. Package Store All Alcohol Common Vitular, LABH Inc., DBA Mendon Wine and Spirits, thirty-two Hastings. Tree Nizang Corp., DBA Liquor World, one A Cape Road. Uh, Restaurant Wine and Malt Regular Common Vitular, ATLK LLC, DBA Telax Pizza, thirty-two Hastings Street. Restaurant All Alcohol Common Vitular Auto Automatic Amusements Entertainment, Roy Ventures Corp., DBA The End Zone. Sports Pub, The Outer Limits, thirty-nine Milford Street. Southwick Wild Animal Fund, DBA Southwick Zoo, Galiford's, nine Southwick Street. General on-premises wine and malt regular common vitular movie entertainment jukebox, uh, Fat Brothers LLC, DBA Mendon Twin Drive-In. Thirty-five Mendon Street, Farm, Farmer Winery Pouring Permit, Wines Only. Susan Vandevark, DBA Vandevark Wine, uh, Vandevark Farm Winery, twenty-five Level Street. Common Vitular's A and Z Golden Corporation, DBA DB Mart, number three, one Milford Street. Jashal Entertainment Inc., DBA Sunny Fires, one B Cape Road, CL Pizza Inc., DBA known as Pizza Corp., one B Cape Road. Uh, Gold Medalist LLC, DBA Gasco Fuel, twenty-five Cape Road. D and E Donuts, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, four Oxbridge Road. Imperial Gas LLC, eight Oxbridge Road, Muffin House Cafe, thirty-two Hastings Street. Uh, The Hideaway Pizza, La Plant Inc., ninety-five Oxbridge Road. Clough School, ten North Ave, uh, Miskell Hill Road School, one forty-eight North Ave. Uh, Class One License, East Acre Recreational Vehicles, ten Cape Road. Imperial Chrysler Dodge Jeep, ten Oxbridge Road. Imperial Ford, eight Oxbridge Road. Bob's Marine, nineteen Oxbridge Road. Me and Automobiles Inc., DBA Imperial Chevrolet, twenty Oxbridge Road. Imperial Chrysler Dodge Jeep, DBA Imperial Sprinter, twenty Oxbridge Road. A Class Two License, Jamshack LLC, DBA Forefront Auto, twenty-eight Hastings. Certified Sales, nineteen Oxbridge Road. Copart of Connecticut, eighty-two Cape Road. Richie's Drive Line, one Kinsey Lane, Sutcliffe Auto Sales, twenty Cape Road. Paluso Precision Auto LLC, ninety-three Blackstone Street. JNG Motors LLC, sixty-five Providence Street. Imperial Toy Store LLC, forty-four Oxbridge Road. Uh, Hockers Peddlers Transient Vendors, Larry Joe, Larry Joe's New England Fire Pit. Eighty-nine Hartford Ave East Parking Lot, uh, uh, Lodging House, Markel Scott Executive Manor Lodging House, ten Main Street. And did we? Did we get the steakhouse in this? Did anybody hear me say that?
I didn't hear you say.
I don't see it on here.
Mike, it's Laura.
Hi.
Hi, they did not turn their paperwork in yet, but because we're meeting on the twentieth, there's still time. There's a couple of people that I'm chasing after.
Okay.
Okay, that's why they're not on there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm looking for a motion. Have a second?
Oh wait, I missed.
Yeah. Well, you can play back the tape. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Fourteen, looking for a motion to approve the town clerk's estimate temporary increase resident population for town of Mendon. Of July tenth, twenty twenty four to be sixty two fifty.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town administrator's report.
Only have a few things. One is the asset inventory form. That's a sample. What I've shared it electronically with Jason and Mike, but I just printed out a copy of it so the board members could get a sense of what. The form is going to look like. It will be sent out to all the departments, boards and committees via a link. There is an error on it, says fifty thousand, it's really supposed to be twenty five in the instructions. I'm gonna correct that tomorrow.
Here. All assets over fifty.
It's not black and white like that, it's in color. Top sheet is a splash page.
Okay.
It starts and then you hit the start over here and then it launches it.
This should be twenty five K, not fifty.
It's twenty five, yeah.
Yeah.
I realized after I had done it and printed all the copies. So rather than waste of paper, I didn't print it again. What else we got? It's it's, what I wanted to do is if some of the members of the boards have any, the board has any additional questions they might want to add or change. Underneath the form is an Excel spreadsheet which allows us to manipulate the data, sorting by type of equipment. Thresholds in terms of amounts needed. Jason was very helpful in giving us an overview of team team forms. And he led us through the whole process. It is available on a P C, on a tablet, as well as on a phone, so if you, you know, it's as a mobile part of it that if you click the link and you're on the phone, it goes out to the mobile version of it. I'm gonna put it out Monday, closing date's gonna be one, three, twenty four, because people like about three weeks. Which, given the holidays, I don't know if that's a, should be extended maybe another week, I don't know.
And this is really just almost the part of the budget process, so I'm sure by one, three, they have a baseline, doesn't mean we can't add to it as they go.
All right, okay, if we have to extend it, we can do that.
And so this is a Microsoft form? Have you have you? Storage. Right, so the the form holds the data in it, right? But if that form goes away. Potentially lose it if you don't.
Right, so I worked on, I worked, there there is functionality for that, and so basically, the form gets turned into a collaborative form, so David hopefully shared it with Jody. And so now they're both on it and it becomes, we can also turn it into a team form and associate it with a team. There's two things about the data, so yeah, the data is kept in perpetuity, but it is associated with the creator, and that's why I said always have two people collaborating on the form. But there is the, the form is then X, they can export it to an Excel spreadsheet that's built right into the system, and I assume they're gonna save that in SharePoint to work on it there.
But I think we should kind of, we need to have the policy proceed to check.
Yeah.
Actually should be procedural in terms of export it to SharePoint, which is really our primary store.
Right, so like how we're solving that, for example, that that same problem, how we store the data, how we solve the data storage problem for highway when we're talking about using automatic systems to collect cloud driver sheets. So instead of telling somebody to save it. I'm handling that with automation in the background. And it's doing it for them, so we can also do that here. We wanted to get through the like form generation phase, so they're like, these questions ask the, these questions ask the questions that are gonna give us the answers that we really need.
Yeah, so this is good to 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 get the ball rolling, but when you think about it. Mature process, if you can automate the backend, so they're not.
We can automatic, you know, have it automatically saved to a SharePoint site every week or every night or whatever. That's definitely something we can do.
We have to make it last beyond the current board in case.
Right, and so basically, we're gonna talk about that hopefully in the I T working group, but we we need to come up with a team structure that doesn't belong to. So like belongs to the town as opposed to belonging to people. Once we do that. Then we will put these systems in those teams, so then a a team would own the form and the team would be the town. Right, it would it would be in perpetuity because the town wouldn't leave, hopefully, right? So that's the system we're looking to set, trying to make it simple. That's the system that we're trying to set up. And in the meantime, we're gonna have to have some Band-Aids that do some automations behind the scenes to keep things safe. But the bottom line is it's better than being in a Google form that's associated with a personal account. Which is accessible here and say, say David leaves and he doesn't share it because for whatever reason, and we we need that data. So that data is available immediately for thirty days, but just contacting will come in sixty days by them going to Microsoft and asking it for it back. It's stored in a temporary recycled bin. So even if that happened, like there was an immediate dismissal or something, and we didn't have time to think about it, it would be available.
So it's take action and bring it back to our fold. So we need to be careful of what these forms, what type of data we capture on these forms when we're just talking about going out to, I mean. What do you mean? World, I'd say world band would be, we should have a private cloud to some extent, right?
So world band isn't allowed to access our data. This is something that we do when we go through the licensing with a third party provider. Basically, they have to have permission, verbal permission or written permission from us. So that either happens via the phone or a help ticket. Otherwise, they can't escalate to get access. If they do, regardless, that's audited. We can ask for the audit logs. We we can go ask Microsoft to help us broker that relationship if we need to be, but all that data is always being recorded. We just have to ask for it. Or we could get a an I T person that could head up a department that would handle dealing with all that, but for right now, we've kind of offloaded that admin responsibility to to them and they've agreed not to go into our data until we ask.
Right. But to your point, all the all the cloud stuff is not here. It's not located.
That is correct.
It's it's out out in the ether stored on a data farm somewhere.
Right.
So you're not collecting.
I'm more asking what its structure.
Isn't that, but isn't that typical?
It's typical, but like.
But yeah, yeah, but you've got, I mean, not all clouds are created equal, right?
I, sure.
Yeah.
But the cloud we're on happens to be the one in the world. Every government is using, including our own.
Well, it's not state owned, so.
We could move ourselves to a government cloud. That's something we could talk about. They're more protected and more safe and have more regulation on them. That's what federal governments do, but.
But I'm not, I'm not thinking tech stack. I'm thinking about how the tech stacks can figure things like that in terms of access.
Right, so there's a standard for that, that like is a baseline that we adopt just by getting the product and our vendor, then. If you're asking who watches the watcher, we don't have that. That's true. We have to request it. We don't have any system in place because they're the tech provider. We would have to have an employee here who had the skills I'm talking about, you know, the things I'm talking, knew the things I was talking about right now, to arrange that. If you don't. You need to trust your provider, and that's hopefully why we vet them here with a contract every so often and we ask them to prove themselves.
Really world band, and when you said that Microsoft can retrieve it for sixty days.
Well, so what I mean by Microsoft can retrieve it, actually, Microsoft's rules are much stricter than the agreement we have between us and world band, but in order for Microsoft to retrieve it, they need. A written request that then gets certified by voice. It's actually a two-fold mechanism. And if they're asking to retrieve data that's not in a local recycle bin, they need our permission, so.
And it's it's not so much the the access part of that, it's about people's ability to mine the data that. All I'm saying is this type of data, or even like, you know, Microsoft won't talk about it, like Microsoft, it's good for surveys, employee surveys, satisfaction surveys, things like that, kind of.
I haven't really talked to.
Anything that gets into. Just financial types of information, that's all. This is truly financial, I think. I'm always. Yeah, come from the financial services side. It's more about. I'd say you said Washington, not really Washington, the watcher, but it's just more of just. I guess it is about the controls around the environment itself. Because if somebody wanted to do something, not not that we have an agreement that they won't do it, that's one thing. But if somebody wanted to do it.
Yeah.
How is, what's the structure of the cloud?
Sure, so you know.
Kind of curious.
When you hear about somebody, you know, leaking out secrets to the world or whatever, that is always an I T admin, right? You have to trust your I T, sorry, it is, like that's, you know, what's his name? Who leaked all the documents from the D O D? Snowden was a SharePoint administrator, okay, so yes, they have a lot of power. We 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 can set up systems to control that, but you have to have another employee that you trust in your purview in order to manage that. Like when it comes down to it, you have to trust your tech people. You trust it in house or out.
One of the things I I do, obviously, there's personal information when it comes to finances and numbers and things, but. One of the things that's different about the government is, you know, we're not dealing with military secrets. You know, but on the on the municipal level, everything we do, it's all public anyways. So a lot of the things that are that are issues for a lot of I T. Departments aren't for us. I mean, obviously, we have, like for instance, emails, well, they're they're already all public documents anyways. Certainly, there there are things that the police department have all the criminal records. That's why they're petitioned and separate.
Right.
Right, and then certainly there's personal information that H R would have, which is certainly an issue.
Yep, but for this particular data, like for example, for someone to get access to David's data, they would have to be David. And so in order to be David without changing David's password, you literally have to have known his password, come in, break into his computer, whatever. So in order to be David, you have to be David or change his password. If you change his password, he's gonna know if you're David, he's either leaked his password or something, or it's literally David. And so there's no, there's no case where an administrator can be David without changing his password. That's the audit process. And so in order to do that, any password change is also going to be audited. So at that point in time, there's there's no way to wipe those. They don't have access for the ability to clear those types of logs, period. So we would then always have access to that information by request. Therefore, the watcher is the system itself. This is how Microsoft has set all of this up.
It keeps a history of everything.
It keeps a history of everything. We can keep that for a much longer period of time if we were worried about it. I think right now it's a sixty day thing. It could increase up to seven years if you really want to, but cost money.
And Mike, on on some level, that ship has sailed a little bit because, you know, we're using SharePoint Cloud already for a lot of working documents and that's already not stored locally.
Yeah, so it's much safer in the cloud.
I've always been wondering what. How the cloud is structured, because world game also. When we say it's partitioned, partitions can take on different types of.
So we're in what's called a tenant, and the tenant is partitioned by database and then physically separated by, as physically as you can get, by logical separators in the software. The way that you get a physical separation is by paying more for a highly secure tenant, and so people do do that. That is something that you do when you're trying to. Meet certain specifications laid out by the government and certain standards and protocols. We just don't have that requirement.
I'm pretty sure that that all of the criminal requisite that our police department access is through the state, through.
Yep.
C G S and.
And they're over there moving that physical hardware off-premise to actually secure it better, because right now it's so easily.
The cloud, I mean, it came from, everything was migrated to the cloud.
I mean, is it useful to do an overview of the system?
I was actually more the use of the form itself. I was wondering why we need to use like SharePoint form and stuff like that.
This is just a more modern version of that. We can still write to a SharePoint list at the same time, too. Like, that's all possible.
Well, it's the storage that kind of struck me, because I'm like, it's all sort of very siloed and not.
Yes, this is the Microsoft, we call it the Microsoft stack. This is, this is how they do stuff and it's well-integrated. We can do a lot with it going forward.
Yeah, they've got three different types of forms they've put in their stack. This is wonderful. This is probably the most user-friendly.
This is the most user-friendly.
Localized.
Yeah. Right, so copying the data around is how you keep it safe. We also back it up, you know.
Yeah.
So anything else on on your report, David?
I was gonna ask about the getting the budget forms out now. Jody and I are gonna be meeting, I believe, tomorrow to talk about the process, and and I'm unfamiliar with the process that has been in the past. Is it something where we would meet? With the board and with finance to the finance committee to discuss certain parameters, or do we just blindly send the forms out?
Normally, normally what it has been, it actually has not been financed, it's been the the town administrator. Dealt with each department head, and the way it started was. Just because of the the financial realities, you started with a level service budget. So you asked each department to give you a level service budget, and you would ask for that. And then normally, what we would do beginning in January is, once you you went to that, went through that with us. At the same time, the finance committee would schedule. Every two weeks with different departments, different department heads would come in. To talk about level services and then we figure out, you know.
I didn't know if we gave guidance, just said, all right, we're gonna give you X percentage and you can use it however you want to use it, but you can't go.
No, usually, well, well, it it was freedom, again, it's level service. Certainly, if anybody had any issues, things that they wanted to change, then they would address it to you, to the, to the, to the, to the town administrator, and then that would follow through to us.
It's level service, but they they can put in asks.
Sure.
So I expect Dave to be.
Yeah, we'd start with level service and then and then any additions, because if you remember, we didn't, you know, we we didn't move, we we still have, you know, free cash that we didn't. We can look at in in May, and there's also, you know, the search for different pockets of money, and now we're looking at restructuring. So but but the first step is normally that you would deal with each department and ask them, give them a deadline, give them two weeks.
And 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 I would sit, in in other communities, I'd sit down with those individual departments, go through their budgets. And then, you know, with the finance director or the town accountant, I make certain recommendations. I make a presentation to the board, I make a presentation to finance, and then we'd all sit down the other one day.
And there there are some things we should, we probably, that Jody's probably, we're probably aware of, things like, you know, last year, we we split the library increases between their grant and fifty fifty, we baked fifty in. We should consider taking the other fifty into the operational budget versus grand. You've got.
But those are things that, again. That would come from Andrew.
Right, right, but I I think also.
I'm looking to have Jody coordinating this whole.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that's as a finance director.
Our regional dispatch, maybe not this budget, but I know Dave's mentioned a few times that we're gonna start taking on a greater share for operations.
We actually had a, he and I had a conversation about that this week.
Oh, he's talking, he's, he's keeping it up front and center, which he should, you know.
But also, I I asked him how he negotiated the deal that he did for as long as he did in the history of it, because the conversation is, well, you know, can we just get it for one more? You know, push, kick it out one more, you know, I mean, that's, you know what? When I first, this this whole thing, the water, you heard about when we started with water with.
That doesn't hurt to ask.
Hundred thousand and three hundred thou, you know, you ask, and then, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask.
So, all right.
Da- David, I just forwarded you the the budget letter that was sent out during the start of the budget process last year, just for reference.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
He forwarded the the budget letter. He forwarded the the budget letter that we that was sent by the town administrator last year.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm a little hard to hear.
Yeah, but- I'm a little quiet. But the idea of 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 having the finance director help coordinate that was was the original intent when she was hired a few years ago. So this is great.
That's gonna happen this year.
Great.
That's the plan. Um Hastings, uh we have the RFP in with all the changes made by uh the uh vendor that we hired to put together the specifications and the actual sort of wrapper. Um I've asked Karis to take a look at it, I've asked-
This is for wh- which one?
Uh the he- the law, the the law office-
Oh, records room, I mainstreamed.
Right, sorry, they call it Hastings.
It used to be the law office.
That was the records room and a bank. So uh we're at a point where I'm hoping we're gonna, by early next week, uh be able to put some dates in there. There are certain things that have to be done before the um actual uh uh bid goes up. We have to put it in central register, combi's, we have to get the prevailing wages, we have to put an ad in the paper, we have to post it at town hall. We ju- I don't know, I can't remember if we have a uh a contractor visit where we have the the people who are interested in bidding on the project come in uh and talk to the vendor or the arrender um to uh ask questions. So that everybody and then as the process goes on, if somebody, we have a a deadline for questions. So if somebody raises a question, we send it out to all of the potential uh potential uh vendors. A combine, basically, you choose a tune so that you're you're choosing all the vendors who are registered with combine that do those the particular specialties. So there's a, there's a little bit of work involved, I'm hoping within the next week or so, we'll be able to get that out, open it. As the they wanted us to have it out to bid by the the end of December, which, well, actually, they wanted the bids done.
Yeah.
But my understanding from talking to Ross, who is the program manager, he said that all we wanna make sure is is that it's done correctly. And he said that the opening in mid or late January, I think, was still okay because the season isn't gonna start until the end of March or April, so. And it's not a big drop.
One, one, one just detail to to put into this. Way back when we were first start talking about this, we realized that the footprint that the building is on is not completely owned by the town administrator. There were issues that the land was actually part of the building, the building was partly on private property. And it was gonna get addressed. And I just wanna make sure that we're all aware of that. And either it has addressed or it's, if if it's an issue, which I-
Alright.
It should, it should be probably, I I'm just curious what the status of that piece is, I could, I could find that. Who's got a hand up, Kathy Strong?
Hi, Mike, I might be able to help out with that question. Um we did have the uh, we had the lot surveyed and we also had the lot next door surveyed as well. So that property, um the markers for the building are up. Um Dan has been great about leaving them in place, um so it is not, it is on town property. Um the question moving forward was if we decide to put a bathroom um extension on the building in order to make it more functional, would we need to get an easement or some kind of land grant um or donation? And uh that is uh fully acceptable for the the other homeowner, we just um if we get, need to go to that point, we will.
Okay, but that's, that's beyond the scope of what's being talked about right now, right?
Yeah, but right now, that that uh building sits on town-owned property.
Does, okay, that's great.
Alright, sure.
Thanks, Kathy.
So that's at uh Town Hall Park, the Town Hall project. We got a final requisition in for the payment plus the retainage for the landscaping, I believe that's part of it. Um we uh had made a request to get AutoCAD of all the asphalt's. So, you know, we know exactly where things are. Should there be things underground that we're digging in the in the property, like Thompson aging up in Nobury where we get a a live wire? We don't want that happening, um so uh-
Cause you can only do that once.
Yeah, well, nobody could hurt it, that was good, but uh, so that that's where we're at with that. Uh water filtration, I believe Deanne has taken water samples, they've been sent off to DEP waiting for them to get the approval and once we get the approval, we can turn the water on.
Do you know, did they give a estimated time for a turnaround?
I I haven't gotten an estimate, I talk, I send Kara a one email a week just as a keep it in the flow kinda thing and uh she, you know, DEP is DEP.
Right.
But that's the last step, like they don't need to certify it or something after they approve it, or we don't know that, okay?
Well, wasn't there still an issue about PFAS and additional filtering?
Uh that I'm aware about that, we had covered-
I thought this was the last filter, but I'm just wondering if it's the last test. Okay. A nice holiday treat would be to have water in the building.
It's all I want for Christmas.
You know, it's like, that just violates all my-
We're back in eighteen hundreds, right?
Anyway, so that's it.
Anything else?
Alright, thank you very much.
So we have uh two, we're gonna move into executive session, only gonna come back out to uh to adjourn in the two issues. As you you can see, one of them, non-union personnel, which is to discuss collective bargaining, highway superintendent and um interim town administrator, uh extension contract. And the second reason um is about the trashed property. So I moved to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty-one, A two, Purpose two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, highway superintendent and air entitlement and interim town administrator. And Purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If discussed in an open session, it may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board, trashed property. I need a, so I'm I'm making the motion, I need a second. Alright, roll call vote, Morali aye?
Rubik's aye.
Carter aye.
Cooter aye.
Chanel aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody, we're gonna go into executive session.
Good evening all.
Uh Laura, can you handle making a breakout room because we're not organizers on this side? Or should we just start another meeting for the executive session?
Um you know what, I haven't, I don't have my instructions on how to do that here, so.
I'll create another session, hold on one second.
There's a, if you, if you go into participants, there's a a a section for add a room. I don't, I don't know teams well, so, hold on one second.
It's just a line, oh.
Let me see. Yeah, I don't see that. Now lock the meeting, manage permission, oh wait, here we go. Well, you can, if you can get everybody who's not in and lock the meeting, you can use the, you know, make sure everybody's out and lock the meeting, then you should be all set. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, everybody is out right now except for you two, so if you're able to lock the meeting, then I can stop the recording.
Can each one of you sign these, please?
I refuse.
A, B, C, C, yeah, right.
Do you wanna do it all again?
I don't know, I'll go, I'll make it.
Did somebody start the recording again, or did it start by itself?
I did not start it, let's see.
I stopped it again, sorry.
Okay. It's recording. Oh, there. It looks like it's recording, maybe that's just the time of the meeting, never mind.
Yeah, it says, it says that it's not recording.
Okay, great.
I'm gonna stop transcription though, that's probably smart. There we go. Couldn't stop. Yeah, so we're not gonna be able to continue if it won't stop. Why won't it stop while I started it? Eh, you know why it won't stop, Laura? Because you locked the meeting.
I don't even, I did, how did I lock the meeting? I don't even know that I did that, alright, let's see.
Yeah.
So. Oh, I can stop it, okay.
Entered back into public session from executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Laura. You all on the twenty-first.
Bye-bye.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.